Monday, August thirteenth, twenty eighteen, regular session of the Anamosa City Council, City Hall Council Chambers. One point oh roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Kay.
Here.
John.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Two point oh pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh, motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, July twenty-third, twenty eighteen, regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rod, second by Rich. Any corrections or? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Four point oh, public hearings, four point one, public hearing on proposed amendment to the Anamosa corridor urban renewal area, and I'll open the public hearing. Did you hear anything from anybody about the urban renewal area?
Is there a phone? Is there? We haven't received any written or verbal comments. I know there's nothing to read regarding it.
Okay.
The only thing we have is what's in the agenda and the packet regarding the plan, which is part of that project. identifies the project, the name, all the details of that urban renewal area, and amendment to the corridor area, which is relating to the potential agreement on the improved project for Casey and Devlin's area.
Well, if there's.
Nothing?
What?
Nothing would be.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Four point two, citizens' public hearing requested by Paul Nelson for nuisance abatement notice served for property located at two oh one Park Avenue, Anamosa, Iowa. Name and address.
Paul Nelson, two oh one Park Avenue, apartment two Anamosa. Basically, I'm here to speak in front of this council in regards to the new acting chief of police's comments made in the front yard over at that residence, and not going to tolerate it, but it is this council's decision at this point in time to either reprimand the chief of police, or I will be filing a harassment lawsuit against the city of Anamosa. The chief came to the house and basically stated that it is the city's policy that they are going to harass the undesirables until they leave town. It's unacceptable for the police chief in any municipality. This municipality has had a long history of misuse by the police chiefs and this administration. So they're going to be tolerated any longer. As far as cleaning up the property, I will have my property cleaned up when I get around to it. I am having a yard sale, there's no ordinance here to state how long a yard sale can run, and if there is, I'd like you through.
Is that running a continual yard sale, running a business in a residential area?
Yard sale is not business.
It's my understanding that the objects there violate our nuisance abatement ordinances, and so that's the reason.
I will abate my property when the mayor abates it. There have vehicles that have been sitting on his property for twenty years that I've lived here. Are they applicable now?
Yes.
I would appreciate that we stay on task with the agenda item.
In the task in any year.
With agenda item four point two, which is discussion, discussion about the abatement of your property.
I will abate by Friday, and I will file a lawsuit against the city the following Monday. Does that suit you, Rod?
The agenda item's about your property.
Okay. Is that satisfied?
I would say you need to do what's in your best interest.
I need to do what's in the best interest of this entire city and all the taxpayers of this city. This administration has cost this city and the residents and taxpayers of this city how many, hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last four years?
Don't have that figure in front of me, so I can't answer the question.
It's astronomical, is it or is it not?
I would not concur with your statement.
So, as you said, Friday, you'll have it abated?
I will have it abated by Friday, and I will have a lawsuit against the city filed on the following Monday.
Well. So Friday it'll be abated.
So Saturday.
So that's all we're asking for right now, is that you clean the mess up.
Okay, and I am informing you right here at this point.
And since you're coming to us and telling us by Friday, then.
By Saturday, they should be able to check.
Well, Friday.
They are more than welcome to check.
Friday.
On Friday.
Great.
At six AM PM with Officer Travis McNally. If the chief of police shows up on the property, I will file a harassment lawsuit against him personally, carried. Is that acceptable by the rest of the council?
It's America, you do what you need to.
We're more concerned about the abatement at this point, because it's on the agenda. So if you're telling us Friday.
My abatement, I will abate by Friday.
Well, that is.
At that point in time, I would expect that the mayor has the unopable vehicles and unlicensed vehicles off his driveway in the same period of time. Otherwise, this is plain and simply discrimination.
Well, you're more than welcome to make a complaint. There's a form at City Hall.
On anybody's property.
On anything that you feel that there's a nuisance, and we'll send officers or whoever may be to take a look at it and.
As I said, I will, no problem with Travis, if it would have been left alone with what me and Travis discussed, there would have been no problem, we would not be here today. But the chief decided to come and harass me, at which point in time, I am not going to accept harassment from anyone in this administration. This administration has done nothing but cost the taxpayers of this town. You've done nothing to bring economic base into this town, it's time to start working on what you were elected for. With that, I am finished.
So your agreement, you had an agreement with Travis?
I had an agreement with Travis.
What was the agreement with Travis?
That I was going to clear the stuff out by the following Friday, and at which point in time, the chief came down the very next afternoon threatening me, telling me that he was going to quote harass the undesirables and run them out of town. Okay, that is not acceptable for the police chief, carried. So basically, the abatement will be done on Friday?
Thank you.
And the lawsuit will be filed on Monday.
All right. Thanks, Paul.
Jeremiah, what's the deadline on his abatement?
The original deadline?
Yes.
It is already passed, it is Friday.
Okay. So the council needs to motion to move that to Friday the seventeenth, meeting the requirements of the abatement notice?
So he was served an abatement notice and?
Did not meet it.
He did not meet it.
So. So if you're going to extend it till Friday the seventeenth, you just need to make that motion, so you have an official action for the courts and for Travis and for the police department to follow through, so. But under the guidelines of whatever was the initial abatement notice, Paul needs to meet that.
I will not be able to file any further.
I move that we extend the abatement period, an additional week, to the August the seventeenth.
To motion to extend the deadline for abatement for Paul Nelson at that address, two oh one Park Avenue to August seventeenth, is that correct?
I second that.
First by Rod, second by Betty to extend this to the seventeenth of August. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Five point, five point oh presentations, none. Six point oh proclamations, none. Council action items, seven point oh, community betterment, seven point one, discussion and possible action on the reappointment of Jeff Stout and Doug Edel to the Anamosa Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
I'll second.
First by Rich, second by Kay.
We did talk to these people and ask what they wanted.
They requested it.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Seven point two, discussion, possible action on utility service line warranty program marketing agreement between the City of Anamosa and Utility Services, Service Partners, Private Label Inc., DBA Service Line Warranties of America.
I spoke with a few different counties regarding this, and I guess what I took away from that, ultimately, it's a good program that helps people in a bad situation. However, there was concern raised by multiple cities that the attachment of the city name caused confusion, city logo caused confusion, that, you know, not only upset certain residents, but also cost time towards the city offices in terms of answering calls and redirecting to utility service. So at that point, I reached out to Utility Service Line to see if there was a level of agreement where we could, you know, welcome them into our community to offer their services, but not have our name and logo at the top of the promotional materials, and that is not something they're currently doing. So I guess that kind of leads me, you know, again, I think it's a good program, but I don't think that's necessarily the right thing to do, to enter into the marketing. But that's just.
Well, they could still offer it without us.
They can.
So they can do whatever they want to do. I just don't think it would be good for us to put our name out there like that.
And it is an exceptional program, like for fifteen dollars a month. It would be too bad that, because I question why they would even need to do it, put our name out there, and the concept is the reason they have to partner with us is it's obvious if it has to do with wastewater or water, or some kind of infrastructure within Anamosa, the first person the homeowner's going to call is the city. And it's a lot of times tied into city municipalities is why, which kind of sucks, but yeah, it's a hard call.
It's not something the city needs to be in business with somebody else. Basically, they're going off our name, using our name, and that's a terrible idea. It opens a can of worms, and if we did this, I hope every business comes up before us and says, I want to use your letterhead to promote my business.
Yeah, I mean, all they got to do is.
It's a terrible idea.
They can do a mass market to every homeowner at his post office box, street address, whatever they want to do, and sidestep us, there's no need for us to be involved.
And I hope they do, because people who have used their service and called have had good results with them.
And as we're doing more public education, getting different things out there, we can, you know, do something on our Facebook or our website and mention, you know, just as they would norm, you know, as they intended to do, help explain that residents are responsible for their service lines, and even mention, you know, that there are programs out there like this without mentioning their name or anything that may be a benefit, you know, for them to.
Well, we don't need to advertise for anybody else.
No, that's not what I'm saying, but it is the type of program, there's multiple people who do this, I mean.
I think the DNR might offer low interest loans for projects like this for individuals, if you qualify.
Well, I don't think people are going to be surprised. I mean, you can get that on your washer and your dryer and.
Yeah, you can get by a warranty on anything.
So it's not like it's real unusual.
We've had people come in the City Hall over the last probably nine months or so, saying, well, we got this notice from this company that does the service line warranty, and they're asking the city about it, and all we say is, that's a personal choice, it's just like buying your own insurance, you decide what works best for you. Yes, it is your responsibility to maintain that service line, but we can't recommend or suggest anyone, that's what we've always told the public. And it's not new.
No.
It's been around for probably over a year and a half, but the last nine months, we've had a lot of citizens come in and ask or call, and we don't give them any.
Now, is this company sending stuff to people here in town already? I mean, I just, you know, wherever they're getting it, and I've seen some, I guess, didn't pay attention to the name of it.
I don't know if this specific company is or not, they might be. I personally received it.
The thing I wonder too on here, the prices, it says initially this much a month. So if they get more, it's going to be cheaper, if they don't get as many, you sign a contract, and that's it?
Well, it's all stuff we don't need to worry about, because we're not going to pair up.
Yeah.
So we definitely could move on.
Um, that said, I agree with what Jacob said about just if we as a city can educate the public, because how many people think that they're responsible for the plumbing on the inside of their house, not understanding they have from the outside to the main that they're responsible for? People don't think that.
No.
I mean, so a lot.
Or understand the cost involved with preparing them.
Correct, or understand the cost involved.
But if we start trying to educate the public, there is an inference that we're supporting this specific program, and I don't think that's necessarily in our best interest.
No, I'm just mean like we do social media and different things that the city puts things out there, like ordinance, cut your grass, ordinance, don't blow your grass in the street, FYI, you're responsible for the plumbing to the main, like, you know.
And we can do more education when people sign up for their water service, what we should do, besides what we have. We have a lot of information on our new accounts, information, dog licensing is one of them, but tons of different information, but I think what we need to add is a paragraph about explaining.
Okay, yes.
Where the city starts, and the other, and the property owner, you know, I mean, where our lines are. I think it'd be good to kind of put that on that.
I do too.
And I don't have a problem with that, I think it'd be great information.
Just like I said, a lot of people don't realize that.
Exactly, the more you know, yes.
Right.
Just telling them right off the bat, because it's different from city to city, because we have a lot of landlords that come in, well, in this city, I have property, and this isn't how it's handled. Well, this is how it is in Anamosa, so, good or bad, a lot of cities are like that.
This is the first place I've ever lived where your garbage and recycling and yard waste is not included in your city bill. This is the first community I've lived in that is not included.
A lot of people like that, though, they're surprised when they come in, they're like, oh, so I can pick my own garbage holler?
Yeah.
I don't have to go through the city?
They like that option to choose their own. The more we put out there to the public, the better.
So I can add that to the.
Who can?
Yeah, they can put the policy, Jacob, and I thought it would be a good thing.
So let this one die.
That's what it looks like.
Seven point three, discussion, possible action on resolution to approve urban renewal plan amendment for the Anamosa corridor urban renewal area.
So moved.
First by Cody.
Second.
Second by Rod. Any discussion?
I'd just like to take the opportunity while we're discussing the, this aspect, it wasn't a, we were just notified Friday that the city was awarded a hundred thousand dollar grant, so we'll have more steps to come on this TIF process, but good news. So we, we need to set the parameters to our TIF and the value. And that will. That's a discussion we need to have yet. The next step is really the agreement between the city and the recipient, so. Yeah, we need to determine a tax base that they will have to meet. We, yeah, I mean, we can. I mean, obviously, to get a TIF grant, you need to approve your property and add tax base to it. That's the only way to do it. So that's something we need to put it all together for.
The details and TIF agreements, so.
Jacob, prior you say that the city and the project lead were fortunate enough to be favored with the grant?
We were awarded the grant. There's one, us and one other community that were awarded the emergency grant.
This is a new grant process, right?
This is a newer grant, I think, this may be the first year.
First time.
Again, we're not in the traditional grant period, we're in the emergency grant, so it is different, but yes.
That's awesome.
Yeah, especially if you're pilot initiative.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? It's a roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Seven point four, discussion, possible action on feasibility study proposals for joint law enforcement facility.
So this is the only idea that got discussed, I guess, between my arrival here and now that seemed to have some traction behind it, and so that's why I got these proposals. I haven't got any feedback from the county if there's any interest there, I mean, if there's not, obviously, then we don't want to waste our time looking into it, but again, I, we do need to do something with the building soon, but we, it would be worth our time to make sure that if we have a useful purpose for it, that we do that now and not wait till we pass it along. So what are, I guess, what are your thoughts from the three proposals I sent out, like pretty detailed? Um. My thought is sooner than later, we're going to need to do something with our PlayStation. If we pair up with the county, now there's two boards trying to work out details. Um.
Time is of the essence.
Well, that's, that's my fear on this, if we wait for the county to make a decision, it could be six months, a year, two years away, when we've got somebody right now that we know that will complete a project willing to do it.
And we've been sitting on this long enough that that conversation should have taken place a long time ago.
No, a number of months back, Mr. Deitmeyer had a conversation with the supervisors, is that correct? About becoming a joint operation, and can you, did you get any information back from them at that point, were they interested or?
I haven't today received any feedback from that initial meeting.
And you were offering to donate some land?
That's correct.
Mike?
Yeah, can you come up to the podium?
Come on, Mike.
Come on.
Here we are. We have.
We know you're kind of a shy guy, but.
Let me turn that camera toward you a little bit. We have, we have a rule, people can't talk from the chair.
That's right. Well, you got me now. Get the question going. Okay, so we did have a meeting with the Jones County Board Supervisors, I just asked to be on the agenda just to talk about that one thing, the need for a law enforcement center, both for Anamosa, City of Anamosa, and Jones County. I think we both know the condition of both, both places, where, you know, the city's using a library that wasn't really built for current, but they're doing a wonderful job, I mean, they're maintaining, they're able to do it, but, and then Jones County down at the courthouse is starting to get a little bit jammed up there also. And it was just, it's just a thought I had at the time on, hey, you know, can we get the conversation started with both parties, and can that, can that go somewhere? You know, Councilman Shaffer there brought up a good point, darn good point, one I never thought of, of trying to get two, the board supervisors and the city council together to try to, you know, get something worked out on the needs of both, because I'm sure they're both different. The, to me, you know, going behind a few bars, it would all seem the same. You know, Tucker is.
The locals.
Local. You asked me to come up here. So, so, and at that point, I was looking at, and still look at, at the property that we ended up purchasing a couple of years ago, down by the Oliva DOT property, and possibly using that, if it would work, if it would work, you know, I'm not trying to shove anything on anybody's shoulder, just, you know, we've been here to help, and I still want to, you know, it's just, that's what we want to do. Now, what you guys decide to do on the hospital or what have you, you know, I, you know, whatever decision comes up, I'm fine a hundred percent, and we're here to help, that's the way it is. I'm not gonna, not gonna go out here going, gosh darn it, you know, we didn't get it done. I think I made a mistake, that's a decision you guys have to make, whatever decision you make is different. I mean, and that's, so, anyway, that's all I have about that property. I think cleaning up that property down there at the DOT, I did get, I managed to get some more of it off of the, off the contaminated site, so more of it is usable, and there's guidelines on, you know, what can be built and how it can be built, but the whole property actually can be used, it's just we can't have any playgrounds out there, and any basements below grade, that type of thing. But other than that, you know, I think it's a wonderful property, to be able to utilize for something as far as backdoor, but that's, that's just, that's hoping, you know, as far as getting all of them together. And we, we didn't get a very warm reception with the county, I saw a lot of them shaking their heads, of course, I have my own thoughts, you know, on that whole thing. Of course, I, I have my own thoughts, you know, on that whole thing, and you, you gotta be able to think outside the box a little bit, you can't think about what's right now. Or what's gonna happen, you know, twenty years from now, that's what we need to think about, you know, on, on these properties and these, uh, uh, facilities that, that are being used for unfortunately. So, so that's the, that's that part, you know, what else, uh, and I can stand here while you, while you guys are talking. I'll hold this thing down as good as.
So you've reached out to the county like months ago.
It was, uh, it was during the winter months, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
And have gotten nowhere?
No, not, uh, not one guy has, uh, not one of the supervisors has gotten back with.
What about Brad, Robert?
Uh.
What was his take on it?
He would love a facility, um, he, uh, he, you know, he knows what's involved in designing one.
It's expensive.
And that, which, well, and, and a lot of work, it isn't, it isn't just, hey, here's the, here's the dollars we've got to come up with, it's the kind of work,
uh, to be able to get the design that will fit not only Jones County, but City of Anamosa, and are those different?
So I don't know, but, yeah, I, I, he, and, uh, I think all the law enforcement, in, including the, the folks that were at Anamosa at that time, starting to get some new folks there, I'd have to reintroduce myself, I don't know if I've just been town. Pull them over. So, yes, I, to answer your question, yes, we did, and, and they listened to me, uh, talk and, uh, but nothing really came of it, and I didn't expect anything like that. You know, I, uh, but I sure was hoping that I'd get some response. You know, a letter saying, thanks for showing up and having an idea, but, yeah, I didn't. I'm still a city act.
Well, at least let you know when, yeah, we're interested, maybe work on something.
Yeah, or at this time, not interested.
Yeah.
Or, or give you a timeframe, hey, yeah, we're thinking three, four, or five years.
And Rich, that came up with your comment earlier, where you said the county doesn't, will it be six weeks, six months, six years?
Yeah.
Have to use that triple six.
So Mike, can I ask you a question? If you were gonna acquire the property, would you be willing to, even though there's no commitment from the city or the county at this point, would you be willing a year from now, because you're still working on it, to rejuvenate it, revitalize it? Would you be willing to be open to that at a later date?
Uh.
Do you, that's my question.
Okay, so are you talking about what, what, the?
Like if, like.
The hospital property?
Yes, the hospital property, so at a later date, like if the city gave you that property now, would you be willing and open to working with the city and the county to make that a, because the county can't commit to it now, the city can't commit to it, because we're slow, we're definitely, we get that, so if later, like six months from now, would you be?
Well, obviously.
How do you feel about that?
Okay, so, Tammy, just to answer that quick, you know, I, six months from now, there'd be nothing ready to do anything.
Right, that was my question.
Now, in the timeframe I laid out last time, uh, you, you were absent, uh, but, uh, I talked about, you know, kind of a two-year type commitment, uh, on, on getting the building to where it is completely usable, and that's, that's heating, air conditioning, all of that. So, you know, we would have some, uh, some expenses there, big expenses to get it, but, you know, if in fact that property would work for, uh, a law enforcement center, whether it be the City of Anamosa, whether it be the Jones County or both, you know, I'm, I'm open to that idea, a- as I said earlier, we're, we're here to, to, uh, better the community, you know.
Because if you could give us a, if you could give everybody a timeline, that would kind of give everybody an idea, you know, here's, here, here's as far as I'm gonna go, if you can't do it up to this point, look at it at least, and then after that, you're, I'm gonna do what I need to do.
Well, it, the problem with that, that statement there is, I don't know unless I talk to, uh, th- an engineer firm or an art tech firm that has designed a, a modern police station, I have no idea what that, so, you know, that's kind of a little bit of a loaded question, you know, as far as, I can't get a building prepped for something like that.
But you can get, but all you're trying to do right now is cover your losses and so it doesn't get any worse.
I.
Right?
All I want to do now is, uh, take a building that's been an eyesore for over four years and, and try to improve it, one, get the roof, uh, fixed, that will stop it from running in, get it dried up, um, abate the, the asbestos, the mold remediation, and then try to get some, uh, some heating, uh, in there. We're not gonna worry about cooling, we'll be running in the wintertime now, but try to get some sort of heat that, if we brought water into it for the winter to try to keep things going, uh, especially for the mold remediation, you know, that, you know, that we're not gonna have a, the pipes freezing again, so. And anybody that's been in that building, as I said the last time, uh, it doesn't take much to figure out that that's gonna take a while. It, it would be a, it would be, I think, uh, even at this point, a major undertaking to try to get it to that point by the time the first. I'd say it'd be a major undertaking to do that, but I'm not saying it couldn't be done. Like, I believe.
Do you have an idea in mind of what you want to come and propose to the city to obtain that property?
As I stated earlier, you know, we wanted to take over the property.
Just take it over?
Yeah.
And, and I know that.
And repair the property.
Okay.
So.
I'm just, I already know I'm asking for clarification, so when people watch the camera, they know that we're, what we're talking about, so, fine.
Come on in.
Yep, um.
So I think that Jacob has put something together, I didn't see any of that, I called him earlier today just to see if, uh, it was on the agenda and if I, uh, who needed to be here as far as to answer questions, uh, I don't know what you guys, but I think you got a decision to make there also.
So, kind of back to the feasibility standpoint, i- if, uh, we can't get any type of commitment from the county, there's no sense in us doing a feasibility study to include them if, if it's not even on their radar yet, we, we have a need to, uh, uh, you know, on short order to, to kind of get something in place to improve our police station situation, so, um, feasibility study, I mean, we're running out of a hundred-year-old building that wasn't designed for handicap accessibility, uh, utilities, you know, it's, it's not hard to be, have a feasibility study, you can walk by it and say, ah, you need something better.
Are you saying?
Well, he, he, this study would be more on what the, the cost of a new structure would be versus.
Right.
Ca- comparing the cost to renovate the hospital versus the cost to build a new structure and the ongoing costs.
So, I sat down a little bit today, um, and you had some figures, uh, around two hundred and eighty thousand is what you thought you initially put into it to get it to maybe a blank.
That's just gonna be the mold and the asbestos, that's not.
That's to close it up.
So, if you figured a, a hundred dollars a square foot build out on a new building, twenty eight hundred square foot building, that's bigger than what we have now for a police station, so. Weighing the odds of putting money towards the property that Mr. Dytemeyer would like to acquire, or picking a new spot and start digging and let's build a building there, I don't, I'm not sure that we.
Well, Mike, I do have a question, that property by the library?
Yes.
Does the county have to be involved in that? So if the city said, hey, we'd like to build a police station there, we don't need to have the county to come in on it, is that correct?
Uh, you, that is correct, yeah.
Okay, just to clarify.
Yeah, we just, uh, I'm, I'm sure you figured stone.
I was saying, okay. I'm thinking, what are we gonna build for a hundred dollars a square foot?
I think they'll use it in the concrete.
Oh, yeah, oh, they do.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, good job.
Yeah.
No, the, uh, I think, uh, um, as I stated earlier, that property, I feel is a good location, you know, if the city wanted to, uh, if the city wanted to go, uh, go after a law enforcement building for the City of Anamosa, you know, in a location like that, I think, uh, talking with, uh, with my brother, you know, I think we could probably make something happen.
That is a large enough.
If, if in fact that would be a property you think would work for you, you know, I mean, one, you gotta do a little research on that.
And it's large enough that if the county did decide to get out of the, uh, uh, courthouse and they needed more room in the courthouse for the rest of their offices, uh, what is that, four acres?
Uh, I think it's three and a half acres.
There's, there's plenty of room that we could say, hey, we'll, we'll lease you property here.
Or, you, you design it so that there's additional room to add on to the building.
Room.
Um, since that's so clo- close to that creek, is there any wetland in there, any flooding?
No wetland, uh, but, uh, just from what I understand, uh, that the houses that are across that, that street, what's the name of that, is that second?
First.
First street. Okay, uh, across there, I think they had some problems there, uh, with, uh, floodplain possible insurance thing, so that would be an easy. We'll just look it up and see, uh.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't looked at the new floodplain map.
Because the, the, uh, the, uh, the library, you know, was able to put in that same area, uh, at the same level that it all was at one time, by bringing in Phil and raising it up, and I think that's, uh, that wouldn't be a, that wouldn't be an issue there, you know, and then building there is not one as long as we stay by the rules that, uh, they had put down for that community.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, all it needs to be is a cement slab, there's no digging that needs to occur, so.
Just put it.
Yep.
That's all it can do.
Yeah.
No different than what the library was able to accomplish.
Yeah, so, just, just thinking about whether or not we need to bring in Phil to get it up above a certain level, just to make sure.
Yeah.
Maybe we could trade you.
I, I'm, you know, I, you know. I, I did pay a little money for that one, I remember, so. A little money for that one. Happily. Um, what else did you have to make?
Well, the city acquired the hospital a year and a half ago. And we all had hoped that at some point, by occurring it, we'd have it in our control and get it back in to the private sector. When that didn't occur, I also thought that a joint law enforcement center would be ideal. The location suits that purpose. And the exterior structure, not the interior, the mold and all that, you, that's as solid of a building as you will find.
There's no doubt about that.
It would cost you some pretty good coin to erect that same structure. I wouldn't, I would really like to know if the county, and we, the ci- we've proven that the county and city can work together, maybe on smaller scale projects, nothing this size, but, you know, like, there's good people serving on both of those boards. So I gotta believe that a collaborative effort of working together would not be that hard to achieve. I would like to know if it is something that the county would even entertain or not. And that could occur within two weeks of phone call. I know I'm pushing you, pushing you back.
I think that's a great idea, I hope, I think that's a great idea.
And I'm certainly not using you as a tire to kick until something better comes along, that's not, it's, it's.
No, I think, I, I think it's a great idea, explore, uh, you know, all the possibilities, um, I just assumed in the last three weeks that might have been done already, but.
You would think.
The pace that they move, if you don't know, so.
Obviously, the ball's been put in position, Jacob has.
Yeah, you got, you got.
Reached out to some people, but, you know, county, can you, would you even entertain this? No? And Mike, right now, you're the go-to guy.
Um, I think that's a great idea.
It might mean getting put on their agenda and attending a.
Well, if you try to get put on their agenda and.
One of their meetings rather than trying to talk to them individually.
I can try to get put on their agenda and, uh, at the same time, we can even work towards, I still think, I have no concerns with your proposal, but I think it's the right thing to still open that up to other proposals as well, um, and we can do that kind of at the same time, so that whatever answer we get from the county, we're ready to go to pull the trigger, uh, at the same time and try to sell them the property or, or give them the property.
That would be excellent, uh, they have, you know, a meeting every Tuesday, so I'd imagine you call there in the morning tomorrow, you can get on for next week.
You know, and right now, in a sense, Greg's the keeper of the keys with the county sheriff's department. Uh, if the chair he's sitting in, if he's not even warm to it, you know, then move on. If, if he's, you know, if he would bless it, then the county supervisors need to, in a sense, be put on a spot, is this something you're interested in? If they're not, we move forward.
So can you find out, uh, from the county, between now and our next meeting? Since the county, they meet every, every Tuesday.
Certainly try, yeah.
Uh, and then we can put it back on there, Mike's proposal for next, our next meeting, and then, um.
Make a decision.
Make a decision next meeting, then that puts him on track to tighten up a building, if we so choose to go that way.
And you know, if, uh, tell you what, if, if me, if, if the legwork I did, you know, to bring this thing to light and get some dollars, uh, sparks this law enforcement thing and it all goes and it goes there, I think I did my job. You know, I think that, you know, it would be worth whatever time you put in, if that would happen, you know, we'd have a better facility for everybody, if it works, and I'm, I'm all for it, there'd be no heartburns or whatever, it'd be wonderful. We need it, everybody knows we need something for the community, whether that's it or not, uh, we'll find out.
I do think it's too big of a structure and too big of an expense for the City of Anamosa on its own to do, that the only way that it would work is if the county and city did it together.
We could definitely spend tax money better if we're on our own.
There's no sense, yeah, there's no sense in even doing the, um, the study.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't propose doing the study unless they were already, at, you know, they, they should be interested in partnering with, with the study at least.
Now, w- we also can't let this building sit for five years when they, if they say, yeah, we're interested in three to five. We won't have anything left to partner with.
Yep.
Oh, all's wrong, we'll keep it going, huh?
Mike, I'd also just like to state publicly, I think it's pr- it's first class, um, your Dytemeyer family, that you're willing to take this over even in two weeks, you're allowing us every opportunity to put something else there, that, that speaks highly.
Well, for, for the folks that have been around long enough, and I appreciate that, Rod, I mean, and, uh, I would lay that on to, to my brother and my mom and dad, but, uh, to the folks that have been around long enough, uh, I know that, uh, Bill, Marge Weber, Frankie, Joy Stagmeyer, and, and I hope, my brother and I, that, uh, you know, we're committed to the community and the county.
That's very apparent.
We want what's best, we don't have a bottom. Anything else from me, guys?
Appreciate it, Mike.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
I'll, uh, I'll, uh, you know, I guess I'll hear from, uh, somebody in a couple of weeks or so, all right, then?
Sounds good, thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. I, I'm, I'm gonna go.
Is there any other discussion on that, otherwise we probably need a, a motion, uh.
I make, um, I make a motion that Jacob goes to supervisors and the sheriff's department and see if they're willing to work with us and have an answer back, so we make a decision at the next.
Second.
First by Betty, second by John. Any further discussion?
Are we putting a timeframe on that? So that they're not saying, yeah, we wanna work with you, but.
Oh.
Are we gonna say? Are we gonna say, work with us within the next year, within two years, three? I mean, I, I'd like to have that, say, yes, we're willing to work with you, and we wanna start-
I would say, find out how soon they are and then we make our decision.
Within a year or something.
Cause are we gonna say only if they're willing to go in six months, or are we willing to go out of here? And if they say farther than that, I'm not sure that's, yeah, I don't, I mean, they're working at what, two thousand nineteen budget right now? I mean, let's talk realistically.
Well, I know, but I think there needs to be some type of stipulation in there because of the fact that, oh yeah, we're willing to work with you. But, that's it.
Well, and in all reality, I'm not, I don't see anything happening until the twenty twenty budget, like, seriously.
I mean- Well-
I mean, to, if we're to be honest and we're to be serious-
Right, so, so if we're looking that far out, what are we gonna do?
I, are we gonna have anything to do anything with?
If you wait that much longer.
If we wait, I mean, you can't, yeah.
So-
Yeah, like ninety days, we need to know.
Yeah, we need to have an answer within ninety days of what's going on.
And even then, that's a little longer than I'd like.
Uh-huh. So you wanna commit the response in ninety days to the project?
Sixty days.
I, I say sixty. I'm not keen on that, I want a response in two weeks.
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
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 Cause we told Mike two weeks.
They're either, they're either in or out.
We need to-
I mean, at this lo- at this point, they really need to be in on the study or, or out, I mean-
Yes.
Because-
Well, it should be a shared expense.
Right, they, they should be able to commit to, to half of, uh, half of the study cost.
Yes.
And if they can't do that now, um-
If they're interested, they should be willing to do half the study. If they're not interested, we're moving on.
They, they, they know that this is gonna be a financial commitment and it's, it's not gonna be pocket change, it's gonna be some serious dollars.
And Mike asked them once, he already brought it up to them, so they've heard.
So you guys, you guys wanna commitment response to the study itself?
I just wanted to know-
You have fifty percenting, fifty percent share by a certain date, that would initiate that process. It's not gonna guarantee anything for Michael or this thing.
See, this is where the problem already lies.
Because what I'm saying is you got-
Fifty percent share, they're a larger department than we are.
I, I'm just throwing it over-
They have more people, we're not, we're not a fifty fifty department.
Well, and if you're going to ask if they're interested next Tuesday, are you at that time going to ask if they want to share in this study?
Certainly can.
And whether or not it's on their agenda as an action item, it may be then the following Tuesday, which will be the Tuesday after our meeting.
Uh, ask to have it an action item.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to do it that way.
And you'll know, as you're looking them in the face, if they're like, oh yeah, or if they're like, hmm, you'll know.
So, what's the motion, you guys kinda just changed it all?
Um, I reca- I-
Cause all I had was motions for the city administrative, other supervisors, and sheriff's department regarding a proposal for a joint law enforcement facility.
I say a response by-
Hold on, ask-
At the old hospital.
At the old hospital.
Yes.
Because we still have options open.
And I say- That's just it, and I say that that's enough motion, the rest, they're either in or they're not. As far as time deadline.
Do you wanna commitment date on this?
Yeah, two weeks, and two weeks.
I think, well, yeah, because if we let it set another five years, it's not gonna be anything to do anything with.
We need to know before our next meeting.
What happens if they turn around and say they wanna table it next week? They're interested, but they wanna table it.
We need to move on.
That makes my decision easier.
Then we move on, yes, yeah, it does.
Okay, so, motions for the city administrative, other supervisors and sheriff's department, Jones County, regarding proposal for a joint law enforcement facility to be located at the old hospital site with a response, with a commitment, with a response, with a commitment, what do you wanna say?
Commitment.
Commitment. With commitment.
I don't think we need a deadline, let's see what they say. If they say we're interested, we're very interested, but we're not gonna be able to catch it for a year.
Just say with a commitment.
We still may have to move on.
With a commitment.
Mm-hmm.
No date.
Yeah, I, but you know, if, if, if we go to them and say, are you interested, and they say, yes,
We say-
I like two weeks.
But, we wanna wait, we've gotta be able to say, no, we need a decision now.
We're gonna have to start spending money on that building, if you wanna use it.
Well, I mean, Jacob, you can portray all that, I mean, if you want some of the council to go too, um, but that can all be portrayed. We're here, we have somebody interested, before we move forward with him, we need to know if there's any possible, in the very, very, very near future, we can pull this off. If, you're gonna know right away.
Well, I, in something like this, in business, I would just as soon set the guidelines and be done, then leave that little gray area sitting out there.
So two weeks, are you happy with two weeks? I, I really am not, don't care.
I would be happy if they'd let us know the Friday before our next meeting.
Perfect.
Whatever, whatever it would take to meet the requirements for an agenda, that is the last day of the deadline that they need to let us know.
Well, twenty-fourth, yeah.
Yeah, till that Friday.
If they would collaborate with a joint law enforcement.
By the twenty-fourth.
Let's do, yeah, twenty-seventh, yeah, so, with a commitment by August twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Do you want me to read the motion again? I'm just asking, I don't really care.
I'm okay with that.
We have Betty and John.
Yeah.
Any further-
I just knew you could be an approval with that.
Any further changes, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Gary? Seven point five, discussion and possible action regarding the old hospital property, so that's,
We kinda covered the whole body discussion.
Yeah.
Um-
Seven point six, discussion and possible action regarding development of new city website.
I'm not asking you guys to make any decisions tonight, I, I really just wanted to get it on your radar, uh, it's something we need to start working on, uh, our current website is just, I think, uh, in need of a major, uh, well, it would just be a new website, it's, it just doesn't offer the functionality that, that I think we should have, um, I think as I said in my communication with you, that, uh, for a lot of people, our website's the first, uh, impression that people might get about our city, unless they've never been here, um, and, uh, there's a lot of tools, um, and functionality that, uh, newer websites provide, um, I gave you three proposals, just to kinda give you an idea of what, uh, what that cost and process is gonna look like, and wanted to get a little bit of feedback on how you see that timeline and that project going.
Did you investigate WICS, because that's the program that the library uses, if I understand it correctly?
That, no, um, WICS is kind of a build-it-yourself type program, I mean, it, it certainly serves a, a good function, I, I don't have any problems with it, I don't think it served our needs as well as it, the proposals I provided.
Is this, is the website gonna be pay my water bill online capability?
Yes. All, all three of those have that, that capability.
Okay, and we won't use it? We just have to figure out what the interface is gonna cause between that and our current AS four hundred system.
Yep.
That's another side of it, so it's not just that side, there's two sides. That's true with any system, you're gonna have to cut, you're gonna have to provide the interface in between.
Yeah.
And they've done it zillions of times, so it's not a big deal, it's just a matter of what works for us.
I agree that the website needs to be updated, we need to update the availability of all of the, um, policies that are out there, all of the resolutions, everything that's out there, because now if I wanna go out and take a look at, um, any guideline setting for, say, dog licenses, if I tried to print it, it's, it's really hard to do as opposed to, I just want that one section.
Yeah.
It's hard on websites, it's not-
We, we need to make it more user friendly.
Yep.
Our website's a steam engine.
It is.
It's terrible.
Yeah, it was way back when.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll have Jacob working on, bring this into the twenty-first century.
Yeah, you work at it, I, I've never built a website, so it's all on you now.
Yeah. So, so in terms of, um, I think if we got, if we were able to make a selection, um, and get the project going by the end of this calendar year, it most likely, uh, isn't gonna be built until June, July of next year, so, I mean, if, if, if that timeline sounds right and, I mean, we, then, then we have the capability to budget for it in the, uh, next fiscal year, uh, does that sound like kinda the appropriate way to do that?
Two thousand nineteen, twenty fiscal years, I wanna talk about those, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, that would be acceptable.
Plan ahead.
I think so.
Would all of these companies then be host, or would we still host it where we're at? What are-
These companies would, uh, host the website, I mean, we, we would own the domain, but they, they host it.
They would host it too? Yeah. They would host? So they would help with any troubleshooting that we may have for-
They wouldn't charge us a hundred and fifty dollars an hour?
No, but they, they all do have an ongoing-
Annual fee.
Annual fee.
Right.
And, and I mean, some, some of them get high, but, uh, again, just, well, the, the, the type of service they provide is very, uh, tuned into our needs, they're all specifically only build local government websites.
But let's say, there's changes that are gonna occur on the website. Do we have to put in a work order and go through them and wait three weeks for them to do it, or are you gonna have, or somebody here going to have the capability?
I mean, accessibility.
So the, I've worked with two of the three website companies and I, I s- I think the third one's pretty similar, um, ninety-nine percent of the things that we want done to the website, we can do ourselves pretty quickly, um-
And not, not in like a DOS format, we don't have to do that.
No. No.
We can attach documents.
When you s-
It's a very user-friendly, uh-
Cause what Penny asked you now is unreal.
Yep, it, it would be, i- if, if you can do Microsoft Word, you could edit these websites, um-
Okay.
So when you say we, are you talking department heads, are you talking you? Or are you talking about having one specific person that would be responsible to make changes?
So, that's our, at our decision, um, I think what it would realistically end up being is some department heads would take more control than others, and, uh, we would just kinda have to adapt, I mean, I think Penny would still retain a lot of the, the homepage and, and
We'd be the mango.
help out in other departments where they need help managing it, but, uh,
As long as you don't have ten different people.
We, we have the flexibility to give our different employees as much, uh, permission to change things as we want, so I mean, uh, say, say we want a certain employee-
And not everybody's tech savvy either.
No, that's what, but what I'm saying is, we have the ability to set those, so if there's an employee who we want to trust to maybe make an edit, they can, they can actually make that edit and it still needs to be reviewed by somebody else before it goes live.
Before we will.
Yeah, that's good.
So, so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of details to it, and that's why it's gonna be a long, sort of, body.
Cause we had people at the police department changing things without going through anybody, and then we'd have all these charges coming through, and we're like, what? We had no idea.
Right, there would be no, there would be no charge per change or anything like that.
Obviously, they probably didn't realize they were being charged either.
No, they know, I'm not saying that they did, I'm just saying that it was, it's very frustrating when you see those things come through.
Yeah. Yeah, they're trying to keep it updated and not realizing it was-
Sure, I, yeah, I know, I get that, I just-
Yeah, yeah, let's find something better.
It's a communication.
Yeah.
Get working on it.
Yep.
Alright.
Do you need a motion on that, or?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay.
We'll keep working on it and bring back more details.
Jacob will continue working.
Seven point seven, discussion, possible action on design process for Anamosa city logo.
Uh, this really just came out of, uh, well, I don't know, I, I, as I'll discuss later, I've been working on a review of our utility rates and doing a lot of Excel work and I kinda just got into a, too much numbers and started thinking, trying to use the creative side of my brain and, so I, uh, didn't know what, uh, interest there was in trying to maybe again spruce up the city's image, it's, uh, I, I would say our, our, our current city logo, which is just a blue cursed A, I mean, it's not like, it's, it's probably pretty standard. I don't think too many cities of our size take a ton of time to change our logo, but I think it's something to consider, um, and Kay actually mentioned the, doing a public kind of contest, which I think is a good idea, so, if, what your thoughts are on that, um, but-
So you're about a city contest?
A contest, yeah, to s- accept submissions for potential-
For logos?
Logo. So we're not, you know, we're letting, uh-
We did that once.
That way the kids will have something to work on when they start school.
But not just kids, there are a lot of people.
Yeah, anybody.
Let us collect the best ideas out there and not just-
A lot of artists in the community that do it professionally.
Yeah. And we wouldn't be committed to necessarily using any of them, but-
What's the award, what are they gonna give?
That, I, I mean, we-
The satisfaction of having done it, come on.
No, we, we actually gave an award.
One month of free water?
No, we didn't, we didn't get into the water bill, we went into just to give to you, I, I think we bought in chamber bucks is what we did last time.
Well, that'd work.
I think we gave chamber bucks for the hundred dollars in chamber bucks, and I can't remember who won, there was like three people that were in the finals.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Do we need a motion?
Especially if there's gonna be a prize, yeah.
So when you did the hundred dollars, was that just for the winner, or did you give anything for the second, third?
Nope, just for the winner.
I'll make a motion to have a contest for a new logo.
A contest for a city logo?
For a new city logo, uh, with the prize being a hundred dollars in chamber bucks.
I'll second.
How long shall we run the contest?
I-
Like, all entries must be in by?
Well-
I would run it, I mean, you gotta give enough time.
Yeah, just, let's, yeah.
Do you second it, Ken?
You wanna go to, let's see, we're, say October fifteenth?
Pumpkin Fest reveal. October sixth or ninth.
A pumpkin fest reveal?
Yeah.
But we don't want pumpkin logos.
By October first, if you do it by October first, you'll have it ready for the pumpkin fest, which is the sixth or the ninth?
Whatever that weekend is, but, do we want it then, or do we wanna give them two months from today, or approximately two months?
I-
Okay.
You know, me with dates where? October sixth is pumpkin fest Saturday.
October first might be a good day.
Hmm? I don't know.
As, I don't know, like, it's, I think that's, I think that's enough time.
October first is a Monday.
Six weeks.
What's, what's our first meeting in October?
Eighth.
October eighth, so it's after.
Eight?
But, but we probably want time to review it between the submissions close and trying to announce a decision, maybe you're at a meeting.
After, but- Well, do, yeah, but, well-
So you could say September twenty-fourth.
But, we're going to have to narrow it down to the final three at some point, so do we wanna have it October eighth, and then we make our decision at the twenty-second, or shorten it up, do it in September, have it by-
Pumpkin Fest.
Pumpkin Fest or October eighth, but if we're gonna do it at a council meeting, we're gonna have to even shorten it up a little bit more.
If they could be somewhere like on display and have the public vote, but then how would, you know what I mean, how would you guarantee they only voted once? I was just gonna say, they could tell, they could do tell, but that might get complicated.
You gotta hold Facebook account. Can they do it on Facebook?
You probably could, I don't know if that's the, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's the best way to do it.
Yeah.
They could just do it written. They could just do it written. Submit at the city hall. We could put a form on the website.
Oh, in terms of submitting them?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Oh, they, oh, I think we'll just have them submit over email, or or in person, they could drop it off.
Well.
Okay, that's what I, yeah, sorry.
But she was talking about a, a poll.
Yeah, for the top. It it'll get complicated.
Poll.
I. Yeah.
Yeah, we don't need to make this any worse than it is.
We don't, yeah. You know, my brain.
At this point, we've already made it to.
You have other things to worry about, Rich, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we do. There's bigger things to worry about than a logo right now.
We do, yeah.
So, do you need clarification?
Yeah, just do.
By the first, let's talk about it on the eighth.
There you go.
Yeah, Carter. Works for me.
So they're due by October first? October first. Submissions due by October first.
Okay.
All right.
We'll, we'll get some advertisement out on Facebook and wherever we can.
Rich and Kay.
Maybe the.
You go, Jacob.
Well.
Maybe the newspaper will put something in.
He's back there behind the pole.
All right. So.
Okay, we have a first and second by Rich and Kay.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carry. Eight point O, public safety, eight point one, motion to approve the renewal of beer and liquor license, renewal of Class B wine permit, Class C beer permit, with Sunday sale privileges, Dollar General store number thirty-six eighty-five.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Rod. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed?
Yes.
Carry. Nine point O, public works, nine point one, discussion regarding the use of road rock in cemetery.
The, I guess it was the last meeting we had a question regarding, uh, an expense for road rock and where that was used. It was used in the cemetery and I guess, didn't know what the council's.
I had a que- why didn't they use the millings? They got off the street, you'd have had no cost, and they packed it real well.
I don't, I don't know.
The road base was gone.
Yeah, but they still can use the millings for the base, that's what, the road behind the wastewater plant down there, we covered that, and that's packed good, and that's a good hard road.
Millings removed.
Well, I know they.
When they're on the streets.
First street.
They had the, they had the.
Yeah, they had it for nothing.
They, they could have potentially used that, I I don't know why they, I mean, I know they had the gravel down before the street project.
I mean, I just wondered. Yeah.
I don't know how much, I mean, how long they could have waited to do that, if possible, but.
Just make some use of their millings is what I'm saying.
The plan is, is to, he didn't, the road was so deteriorated that the base was gone. So, his plan was to put road rock in to create a good base, and then as his budget allowed, as he's done over the last two years, he's used stuff to put his se- his budget to put in the cemetery, which is part, he's taking it out of his street budget. So he's trying to offset that, and he said, if I do that now, and then next year when I look at the budget, see where we're at, my hope is, if we're under budget on snow removal and everything else, that I can asphalt that and get that done. He does sections of the cemetery when he can, cause it's not budgeted, but he's kind of upset, he says, his expense comes up. But it needs to be, timeout, timeout. Okay, we have an ordinance, and we need to start following our own ordinance and expecting the public to follow suit, and there are reasons why we don't want gravel put down in driveways, parking spots, there's reasons, and there's, we've had enough hard rain, and we've had enough runoff, there's a million reasons why that is an ordinance, and we have to follow them, and so maybe he needs to start budgeting to get some of this done. And I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but we can make all the excuses we can in the world, and the minute we have the public standing here saying, well, if this person does it, then I will, we can't have that finger pointed at the city. We have to follow our own rules.
Well, and th- this isn't the first thing that they put down for gravel.
I really would like to see that we reevaluate that gravel ordinance, because, uh, obviously, for the city and the taxpayers, it's a budget issue, it, you know. There are places where I I feel gravel is acceptable for the city to use, and especially like Jacob said in his memo, there's a price point. Which, there's a price point for the taxpayers in their own private driveways on where it's feasible and where it's not.
But then when you're removing snow and you're using snow blowers on that gravel, and it's getting out in the street and it's getting, I mean.
So that's where I would, my give and take on it would be, anything in the right of way needs to retain some type of asphalt, uh, or concrete. Um, up in a driveway in somebody's yard.
So then we would have to address the R E C in front of that thing that I just walked through, and if you looked at my feet, you'd think I'd been in the hog barn.
Well, you know, the, the fire station has for, what, two, three years, has been wanting to gravel out in front. They've been told numerous times by the city that they can't do it, and then the city turns around and gravels the parking lot by Casey's, gravels the street down in the cemetery.
Wrong.
So.
Gravels at Runway Park.
Yeah, so as far as I'm concerned, the fire department can go gravel, put gravel out in front of the fire department.
The city's wrong.
I mean, if, and who's enforcing this ordinance anyway? Because I've seen gravel being put down throughout the town.
Oh, we have a lot of kinds.
And as you saw, up on Holt Street, the gravel along the edge of the road has washed all the way down in certain places. And why the city put gravel there, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that's why anything in the right of way.
It's gotta stop, you're right, Rich.
Right, I mean, there's, I would say that's, there's some slightly different issues there, uh, I mean, a gravel shoulder versus the gravel road or a gravel driveway.
Yeah, so, so you're saying it's okay for the city to put gravel in people's yards, but then it's not okay for people to maybe throw rocks into the street? So.
I'm not, I'm not saying what's okay, I'm, I'm saying they're, they're different things according to the ordinance, and, uh.
And I agree with Rich on this.
And, and again, the, the cemetery road, I'm not saying it's the right thing, I'm just saying, I think it's different than a driveway or a parking area, which is clearly just, you know, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Let me ask you this. Did they come to you and ask you before they gravelled it?
No.
They did not. So they had no regard for the ordinance at all? Okay.
And the issue, anytime, and this is why I am anti-gravel, is because when you have it by grass and there's mowing
My understanding, sorry, go.
in your yard, and there's kids across the street, don't for a second think that your lawnmower won't pick up the gravel that the city put there and shoot it across the street. I mean, there's safety issues too, with having gravel that gets pushed into yards and grass. I mean.
Well, I, I'm at a, at a point where we either enforce the ordinance and do it, or we get rid of it.
Yes.
Because nothing's happening either way right now.
And the same with cemetery, they're gonna go mow the cemetery, somebody's gonna be out there, and there's gonna be something shot across the.
There's gonna be geese feathers flying.
Let's hope that's all I can say. Do I gravel driveway in a motion? But, no.
Now, now my take on it is, there's people that can't afford to do anything else to their property. If you have a property that's worth, say, forty or fifty thousand dollars on South Jones Street, are you gonna spend four to five thousand dollars, ten percent of your property value, to put in a concrete driveway? Is it, is it feasible on a forty thousand dollar property to spend the money on it, or? Or continue with what it is?
It's an all or nothing though.
And let it go and continue to let it go, and then it becomes a mighty mess.
Now, it's just mud.
Yeah.
Nobody says you can't have a mud driveway.
With the cemetery.
You can't park on it.
They used to have the equipment down there, they could do it themselves.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
Asphalt, they have the roller, we had the equipment, would save a lot of money, do it themselves instead of hiring cleaners or whoever, they do a good job.
They don't have anymore?
But they could go in and do it themselves, used to, and there used to be a roller, there was a thing.
Still a roller down there.
To hook on the back of the trucks, go get asphalt and eight foot wide, whatever deep, and you got the roller there.
Yep.
If it's still there, I don't know what's going on, but I mean, that would save some money.
Well.
Do it ourselves, or do it themselves.
And, and to me, you know, we've talked about keeping the cemetery looking nice. I'm sorry, but gravel in a cemetery doesn't look nice to me.
Uh, I, I'd like to just give my opinion on this. Uh, I am all for rewriting this ordinance, it's way outdated.
Put your address, Mike.
Oh, sorry, I'm more horrified, North Carolina.
I thought I had it, but I was just didn't wanna put it down.
Um. You know, it is, you, your discussion started out, it is correct, you just can't do as a city, but you're you're not at, you're, you're asking the ci- the citizens to do something you're not doing yourself. And that's not just gravel, that's a lot of issues, but we're talking about gravel. Uh, I think it's time to rewrite this ordinance. Uh, if you read that ordinance, you'll also find that even if you did put hard surface, asphalt, concrete, you're not allowed to grade that towards the city street either, are you aware of that? Okay, we all live in animals, so we know it's full of hills. There's no way in the world you can control all that water heat from going into the city, or into the streets. It's, it's, it's virtually impossible on a lot of these properties. Now, I own property up in Cedar Falls, and specifically in the, what they call the college district, the most heavily regulated area you'll ever wanna do. You know what they encourage? Gravel driveways. And do you know why? Because it, it saves the runoff, it, it, it it, uh, lessens the runoff into their storm sewers, cause it soaks down into the ground. They encourage it up there. And it makes sense, does it not? I mean, can you see what that, that point is? Why can't animals do that? I don't know when this ordinance was written, but I'm pretty sure it's pretty old. It's outdated.
Well, it's only been about ten years, they just changed it about ten, twelve. They changed it about ten years ago when they rewrote the zoning ordinance.
From what, from what to what?
From not requiring hard surface, asphalt and concrete, Portland concrete. They just changed it about ten years ago.
Yep, right, okay, who, who was, who was behind that?
When Pat Callahan was here. I, I don't know who was behind it, alls I know is.
But I'm just telling you, it's, it's just, it's just outdated, and we got the storm sewer guy right here that'll back me up, I hope, when he said, we, we already have enough going into our storm sewers, and you lessen it if you allow some of these driveways to grow. Okay, yeah, an easement, hard surface, but why are you telling people what they can do in our properties? And if your infant's a hazard, someone's walking across the street, you know, you're, have some responsibility on your own. You know, yeah, rocks get thrown on lawnmowers, they do it all the time, happens all the time. You can't protect everybody from everything. It's just not realistic in this world. And I don't mean to be selfish about it, but I just think that it's time that, that you start looking out for the citizens, and like Cody said, the expense to some of these citizens. I honestly, I, I would like to, right now, put a request to you as a council, to put this on the agenda next meeting, to, to look at this ordinance and rewrite it. Get some citizen input from this thing. Cause I, I'm telling you, there's a lot of people upset about it, and they're, and the, and the main reason is economics. But to me, it's also runoff. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So do we need to do anything with that?
We'd need a motion on what, whatever it's actually.
It just says discussion.
Regarding use of road rock.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about an action item.
Yeah, but we're.
All right.
But I'll follow up with Mike's request to have that brought to the council for the next meeting.
I think.
Thank you, Rich.
And I think that as far as a discussion regarding use of road rock in cemetery, I mean, that's that's, I'm with you, Rich, I don't think there should be gravel put down in the cemetery at all, for all kinds of different reasons. Maybe that's something that could be encouraged included in his budget next year.
And I would have thought that before doing it, he would have discussed it with you.
Anything else on that?
All right, good. First by Rich.
Awesome.
No, I don't.
There's, there's no motion.
I just made a request.
There's no motion.
A requ- oh.
A request to have it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Rich suggested to put that on the agenda, and Mike can review it.
All right. All right.
We'll be, obviously, we'll be making a decision in a couple of weeks regarding our current ordinance. Something to think about, when, if we're gonna enforce no gravel, cemetery, parking lots, city-owned parking lots. It'll have to be budgeted. Where's that budget and money come from? Residents and taxpayers. We're, we're saying that we don't wanna burden them, but yet, we're gonna burden them. So, I don't know, it seems.
Catch twenty-two, we're in. Again.
I guess I'm just not understanding some of the discussion.
All right. Ten point O, finance. Ten point one, discussion, possible action on resolution, approving the salary, salary adjustment of seasonal part-time employee for the animals' aqua court for the current season.
So moved.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich, and it's a roll goat.
Teddy, yes. Rich.
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Ten point two, discussion, possible action on request from Bryce Rickles regarding proposed developments.
Uh, we received, uh, three, three requests for some form of tax incentive on the proposed developments. And, uh, I didn't, we're not prepared to get into the details on that, uh, but just wanted to get, I guess, your general, um, thoughts on those, um. In terms of, I mean, uh, I've, I've just discussed them briefly with our, our, uh, TIF attorney and, I mean, what, what that process would look like, um, but I mean, before we go further, just wanted to know your, your thoughts.
Was this whole addition, when it was done? Um. So was an agreement only for certain phases? Okay, so like, there's no streetlights out there in that addition anywhere at all, nowhere, no streetlights. None on Meadow Ridge Court, none on Council Street, so as we're going up and around, are we continuing to have this dark black hole in this part of town?
Those are details.
Okay, but my question is, these phases, was the whole entire development approved? And these phases are now just adding to it? Am I making sense? Has it already been approved, that?
No. There, there, there's part of it that's already in the urban renewal area, but there wasn't, tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's approval for.
The subdivision in and of itself is different than the urban renewal area.
So that to put our question.
I don't know if, in the original subdivision that Bryce had already built, if the, you're talking. if th- you're talking about Meadowridge, that's already there. I don't know if there were streetlights in that subdivision, I'd have to look at that subdivision plan that the council previously approved. But going forward, any subdivision plan that is approved by the city and the planning and zoning, you can require streetlights. And you could move forward with that, so even if it wasn't addressed in Bryce's first subdivision, you can add it to any future.
Alright, that's because it looks like this whole plan, like the whole entire mapping had been laid out years ago.
Initially, it's a preliminary plan, yes.
Okay.
But the final plat, which is approved by the council, was only for that southern section of that. And I didn't see that, I don't I don't have, I didn't look at that subdivision plat to know what was required.
And is this.
You can require streetlights at any subdivision.
And is this something that the city council approved?
Absolutely.
Or planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning reviews at first, they make a recommendation to council, council has to approve it.
And has this already been through planning and zoning?
Has not.
Okay.
And is there any green space included in this, any place for kids to play other than the backyard?
I don't, I ha- I haven't seen those subdivision.
I don't think he's that detailed yet.
We're not, we're not that far yet, um.
This is just a very, very preliminary stage.
Which we get, but when you read it and look at it, it's very hard to understand whether they're adding to what's already there under the same restricted covenants and guidelines that are there, or whether it's gonna be a whole new. I mean, it doesn't really read very well, I guess, or was it?
You'll get the details as the plan moves forward.
Okay.
And and along with that, now, with all of the discussions we've had about runoff and so forth, have we had an engineer take a look at this?
They will take a look at it before they.
I I mean, I, as far as I know, there's there's already a plan for, uh, retention pond.
That's already built.
That's already built in.
Right, but it.
So at some point, they did a stormwater study to know where to daylight the stormwaters into the retention pond. So to de- to determine how big of that retention basin is, somebody had to file a permit with the DNR when they did the development.
Sometimes I feel like we make decisions at this table without the details, without all the information. And then we always sit here with hindsight thinking.
That's what your planning and zoning committee is supposed to be doing for you. But it's ultimately the council's decision.
Well, I I personally think that part of the planning and zoning earlier on maybe had some guidance that maybe not up to par.
Mm-hmm.
Just, just to put it that way.
One of the lines I would want, four twenty-three Chamber Drive, and, uh, before any future development is out there, I hope the council will remember, I've been here for a year and a half bringing forth the problem that we have with the sewage, or not the sewage, the sewer drains. We have some real bad water issues out there, and something needs to be done. Two weeks ago on that one Thursday, it was like a river back there. And the problem is, even so, if that water does get between our house to the street, you're gonna have a flooded street out there. There's gonna be ice in the winter, cause it happens. That's too much water. I was here before the development on Council Street, just above us. And I said, before the 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 development continues, please consider doing something to put some sewer drains in so we don't have to deal with it, all the property owners down below, twelve of us, twelve on top, and even the people on top now are seeing the water sitting in between our homes. This is not good, we need something done. And before any future development, because it's just gonna continue, if they continue to extend Chamber Drive on out, there's gonna be more issues and more issues. It's not fair to the people, and we're all taxpayers. I I'm not against development, don't get me wrong, but it seems like a minor thing to deal with getting rid of having some kind of of sewer drains put in there to take this burden off the whole development area. And that's all I've got to say, I just wish that you'd remember that I've been here, I will be back again with more pictures, I won't let up on it. Because you need to realize, there's more and more water, it isn't getting any better, it's getting worse. And we're gonna have some homes that are gonna be destroyed, we're just gonna travel, that development is gonna look really bad. So please, consider what's happening here, and get a few more details on that before you let that go through. Thank you.
Thank you. So what do we need to do with this?
I mean, if, I guess I'm I'm really just looking for general guidance, if there's, uh, again, there's two two residential projects and and one one commercial, uh, the details are, you know, are gonna have to be negotiated, but, uh,
This is.
If if you guys are open.
Is his plan to do do everything at once phase?
Eight, nine, was it?
Eight, nine, ten?
No, the residential projects, uh, he wants to do over a period of time. Um, any, any, any urban ru- renewal area is only good for twenty years, so I mean, he'll have to fit all his phases into that twenty year segment. But each phase can have its own, it's capped at eleven years.
Starting point, because of when you when you certified it down.
And is he?
That creates a time clock, right?
Wasn't a couple?
So there's a sunset date on it.
There's 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 a time clock on the whole area, but then you can also create phases that have their own eleven year wait period.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, the certified date.
Okay.
And wasn't a couple years ago for, I can't remember the conversation with Pat Callahan, that he, that that development out there did not qualify for TIF, but.
I I don't know.
I'll have to, or maybe it was.
Meadowridge, Meadowridge is an urban urban renewal area, we have a TIF debt in that area. But there's two phases of it currently, part of Bryce's area is already in the urban renewal area. But they're talking about pulling that out of that.
Okay.
And creating a new urban renewal area.
Because he can't, um, if he doesn't pull it out, he won't be able to do it, that's what it was.
Right.
Okay.
But all the detail, all Jacob's looking for is direction on, if you're willing to develop it.
Do we proceed with?
To research it.
Negotiation with Bryce about the options.
I'm willing to hear any and all options for growth and development, I just wanna make sure that we don't look back later and say, why wasn't this done?
So. So I have had, uh, three builders contact me and and wanna know what the city's thoughts are on, uh, creating more lots, uh, buildable lots, um, cause they do have some concerns, they're running out of lots to build on, and they're able to sell houses right now, so. I think we should look into it and see what we can do to facilitate some of that.
So for the city to find the property, I'm confused, say that again.
Or just continue on and and.
Open up some of these developments.
Yeah. But. Which Bryce coming to us is the first step of of that.
Yeah.
City King, I mean, nothing's gonna go through without your consent.
So this is just the first step, but we can still, if we're not satisfied with some things, stop it in the future if it comes to that point.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
He just needs permission to do the research, to get that information, or the council, to make those decisions.
I just don't invest more time and cost with with an attorney reviewing this without your edge of awareness.
There's a lack of housing out there, I mean.
So we'll have Jacob work with Bryce on this so that they can get it done.
I definitely think it's worth, yes.
And John Danos.
Well, I guess I'm confused, Jacob. Uh, you're not, you don't wanna incur additional costs.
No, no, I I'm fine with it.
To review what these proposals are?
No, I am fine with incurring it, I just didn't wanna do it before I brought it to your attention. Does that make sense?
I'm not, if you're gonna be discussing these proposals, I'm really not warmed to these proposals. Three separate?
Well, there there would, again, there's gonna be some negotiations to get the details in the right spot.
To finalize, but.
So you're, one's a commercial, right, and the other two residential, you're, you think it should be just one?
Big drive is the TIF.
Yes.
So, there's three proposals in front of us with three separate TIFs. Not warmed to three separate TIFs. Bundle it all is one.
But that's what he needs to talk to John Danos about to determine.
At at minimum. Now, this is my opinion, Tammy. At at minimum, there'd be two, or at maximum, sorry, maybe the commercial side, then the residential side.
There there will have to be at least two, and I and I think that's probably where it'll go, will be to bundle the two residential projects, but but because the law is so different on TIF that's used for residential projects and TIF that's used for commercial economic development, they couldn't really be.
Well, and Chamber Drive extension, that has, uh, multiple owners on it, that's why it's a separate one. The north side of the street is not owned by Eagleview Land Development, it is owned by Doug Rickles.
Yes, it's, it is different, but. And that'll be a detail we'll have to, that's a detail we'll have to draw.
That's not, but the north side isn't part of the TIF.
Then it shouldn't be combined.
The urban renewal area only was on Chamber.
Well, it's highlighted on the paperwork that I have.
It is, it is included in the proposal, Tammy.
Tammy, according to the ACI.
And it does say.
Okay, that's not what's in the TIF documents, the urban renewal documents, but.
It it's not, I think you're right, I don't think it's in the current urban renewal, but it is in the proposal.
He wants.
It isn't. Right, but he's saying that you're gonna take it out of that current urban renewal and make a new urban renewal.
Right.
It's two separate things, those ones.
So what's coming out of what urban renewal right now? You say he's taking it out of urban renewal, what is coming out of urban renewal?
Just in the, in the initial discussions was probably what we'll have to do is create a, even though part of it already in a new urban renewal area, we'll probably have to create a new one for this, if if we proceed with this, um, proposal.
Right, you're creating a new one, but you said he needs to take out.
Because because part of it's already in one, it'll have to be taken out of this.
So this is already in one?
Part of it is.
Part of it is?
Yes.
And which part of it is?
Well, actually, the majority of it, I think it's everything but that section north of Chamber.
So he's just adding the section north of Chamber.
And the purpose, I think, in taking it out, creating a new one, putting it in, is he can extend the time to fill them and be lots also.
Changes the timeframe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's one advantage for him. The other advantage for him, I think, is that, um, by taking it out, he can't add, he can't have another one, correct, yes, take it out and redo it, to create a new one. You can't just go and take what's there and get TIF for that.
I'm not sure.
I think there was a conversation that, I'll have to find out, I'll.
But if it's alright with the council, proceed with the details.
Yes.
Please do.
Yeah, I do see that that north side is R two, as opposed to R one for everything else.
Alright, so.
Do you need a motion on that, or?
It just, uh.
I I don't think we, it wouldn't hurt, but.
It would hurt, we'd have to have a motion for him to authorize him
It's just, say, proceed.
Well, it says possible action.
Motion to see with negotiators.
So make the motion, uh.
Proceed with negotiations.
Negotiate with Eagleview Land Development on this, partnering up on this project and.
Yeah.
And speak to the bonding attorney.
And I second it.
Yes.
First by Cody, second by Betty. All those in favors and if I'm missing, yes.
With who, with no commitments, correct?
Yes.
This is just purely negotiation.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. See what's set up.
Curved gutters, sidewalks, and streetlights, just saying.
And fringes for water.
St- storm drains.
Storm drains, storm drains.
Alright, eleven point O, city administrators report.
Um.
Do we have all these?
Yeah.
I heard a bunch of mumbling.
You had one.
I I just had, throw us in a second, no, okay.
Do I vote again on that one?
What are we, I don't know.
Please.
All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, carried.
Eleven point.
What?
Eleven point O.
Yeah, I already, I already said eleven point O city administrators report.
Um, just a quick update on our personnel changes, we, uh, have had our our new water and wastewater employees are getting up to speed, and we've got our water, a water employee coming back from military leave that this, later this week, uh, uh, we should be transferring Dave over to the street, but he will work as needed in other departments.
So will you have a new personnel, whatever, for him for the next meeting?
Pop, personnel policy.
Like a job description?
Yeah, job description for him.
I can, yes.
That would be good.
So he will be available in other departments where, as needed.
Yes.
And how's that work?
I'll work, again, officially, he's under the street department, uh, so I'll work with the department heads if if they've got, you know, any they're gonna have to work together to manage that time and and I'll oversee that. You know, if somebody else needs ten hours that that week to do something, they'll just work it out.
Through you or department head to department head?
Ho- ho- hopefully, department head to department head, but I I'll be in as involved as I need to be.
Okay.
Good.
Um, last day of our swimming pool season is August nineteenth. There's a library event Thursday from six to eight P M. Uh, Lord of the Rings theme in Watsiana Park. Uh, our water treatment plant expansion project is behind schedule and expected to be extended past our contract date of September first. Uh, we are, I mean, the engineers are on top of it and already, um, they're they're getting on, on them to pick things up, um, and, uh, already in discussions of potential damages and and how that's gonna go when they're past their contract date, so.
Can you give an update on what, uh, variables played into extending past the contract date?
Well, I, my understanding, the primary thing is the contractor chose, uh, to order a specific type of filter, um, to save costs on their end, and it had a longer, uh, deli- you know, delivery, so that, they they basically halted their work for some, for extra weeks or whatever to wait for those filters, uh, and that's the main thing that's pushed back their their timeline.
Why, why didn't he know this ahead of time, I mean?
Well, they, I mean, they knew, uh, but they made, again, they were trying to save money, is my understanding, and it's gonna cost them on this end, I don't know if it'll pay off, but.
Yeah. If they wanna do it, they knew it ahead of time, they should have had, what I mean, should have had them ordered.
So there was three vendors that met the spec.
Yeah.
They picked the lesser of the three, which we all know what happens when you take the lowest bid. They picked the lesser of the three, which we all know what happens when you take the lowest bid.
So it's cost savings on contractors' part, or cost savings on...
Right. They, they chose, they chose a vendor.
Their part.
It's cost saving on their part, but it costs more time on the project.
Who's the contractor on this?
Collage.
Collage.
Sounds like they rolled the dice.
Do they know, since it says extended past September first, do they, have they given you then a new estimated completion date?
No, but our, again, our... Uh...
Engineer.
Engineers are, I mean, they're very, um...
Proactive.
Been proactive with it. I mean, they, they've, uh... You know, I think made it clear that we're not just gonna let them take as long as they want, uh... They're, you know, we're tending to, uh... Uh, claim damages at, at a thousand dollars a day, past that, so every day, you know, uh... They don't get it done, they lose their money.
And that's part of the contract, a thousand dollars a day rest?
Well, I mean, the, I think it's always, you know, can become litigated, but that, it is discussed, the damages in the contract, yes.
Okay.
Anything else on that? Uh, just an update on my work, uh, got a ways to go, but, uh, for a variety of reasons, reviewing the utility rates, uh... One, just again, trying to make sure that we've got, uh... Rates that are affordable and fair and, and also supporting the needs of our utilities, uh, and specifically, uh, in our water department, um... Requirements of our S R F loan, um... Says that we have to have so much excess, uh, revenue every year for the term of that loan, and we're not currently meeting that, and so... Trying to determine what it would take to meet that requirement, um...
So what was the name of the firm that we hired to tell us that?
Sphere Financial. Did our water rate study for the S R F?
And who needs to call them back up and get our money back then? Cause I believe that fellow stood here and told us that this is, this will meet all your requirements. Al. Al here then? Before Jacob.
Do you want Al to call him?
Now that's who made that decision to use him.
I can, I can call him.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, that, that fellow came here and said, basically, here's, uh...
Thanks, Ford.
Here's your, uh, how many, uh, customers you have and here's what you need. I mean, he did nothing that any one of us at this table could have done in five minutes. How much should we pay for that?
I don't remember that.
It was a lot.
So over two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Was he limited on the information that he was given to complete his study?
I, I don't know.
So what good is the information you get?
It was a pretty poor study.
So I can't really answer that, I mean... Communication.
So we don't meet that requirement, is what you're telling me?
No, we didn't meet it last year. We're not gonna, we didn't meet it in two thousand seventeen.
Was there a projection?
We didn't meet it in two thousand eighteen, and we're probably gonna meet it in two thousand nineteen. It's hundred and ten percent net revenues of both S R F loans.
You wouldn't think addition was so hard for people.
That's the bad part. One point seven five percent on interest is great, but the hundred and ten percent requirement on net revenues is pretty stiff.
Well, and when you're paying back Walmart. And depending on what, how that...
But even without the Walmart.
Well, depending on how that information was presented when he did the study, that could be a big portion of the error.
And we had to hire that.
But even this year, we don't even have it without that.
And we, we had to hire that firm, didn't we, to do that, to get the S R F loan?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because they have to be certified to do that then.
I'm pretty sure he wasn't certified.
In paper.
Any other questions on that? Just enough, general updates that, um, we go into a TIF seminar in Dubuque on August twenty fourth, then attending two of the three days of Iowa Downtown Conference in Waterloo, August twenty eighth and twenty ninth. That's all I've got.
Twelve point oh, mayor and council reports on boards and commissions.
Park Board met on the twenty fifth of July. The, uh, Animosa Day at the ballpark was very well attended, a lot of positive, uh, conversation generated from it.
What event was that, Rob?
The Animosa Day at the ballpark, at the Colonel's Game.
Oh, for the Colonels.
There will be a, an Eagle Scout project at the, uh... Remley Park. I don't remember what the project is, uh, that was discussed. Park Board, as well as Tyler and Shelley, were all on board with it. That's about it from the Park Board meeting.
Anybody else? Thirteen point oh, public with business, with accounts on items, not on the agenda.
Nancy Schaefer, that's remuneration point. Um, I think it would be nice to strongly encourage people who are asking, um, about items being placed on the agenda, such as ten point two... That they show up for these things and possibly it could answer some of your questions.
We're guests.
Thank you, Nancy, for stating that. One would think, wouldn't you?
Yes.
So, um, Vern Schaefer, uh, approached me, uh, I don't know, a week and a half ago, and I see he's here tonight, um, about our A T V, U T V ordinance. And he brought something to my attention that when we made the ordinance, I didn't really think of. And I think since we've made it, it's worked out very well. I don't, I haven't had any complaints. I don't know if you have. Travis hasn't, uh, I asked him if there was any issues with it. But Vern was reading it, has an eighteen hundred pound, uh, limit to the weight of the vehicle. He was looking to upgrade, uh, his U T V to something that was seated more people, and, uh, almost all of them are over that eighteen hundred pound limit. So... He asked if I would bring that up with everybody here, so... We can discuss.
I don't, I don't think, uh, there should be discussion on that at this point.
Okay.
Because it should be a topic on the agenda.
Well, no, I'm, I just wanted to bring it up to everybody's attention and, uh, Vern was here, so, um...
Sure.
And I know we didn't talk about it at all when we made the, you know, it never came up that it would be an issue or anything like that, but after doing just a little bit of research on my own, there's a lot of them that are, um... So, just over that weight limit, just...
So are you suggesting to put it on the agenda next?
I would like to see that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Mike Dearborn, still with the four on five North Division. Uh, I'd just like to take time to, uh... Let everybody know that we, I'm representing Grantwood Art Gallery, and we appreciate the help that the city gave us in the, uh, picket fence, you know, down at the park. It was actually Greg's idea, came in and asked if he could help poke holes in the ground for us so we can get that fence up, so it was much appreciated. One other quick question. I was reading through the, uh, um, department monthly job descriptions. And, uh, with the streets, there was something to the fact that they repaired it up above hot shots. Can you tell them what that was about?
They had to repair that because the city owns that property above hot shots, correct?
Sounds good. I gave it to Charlotte, uh, Charlotte Shuck.
Charlotte, that has not transferred hands yet. There was a...
It's on Beacon.
There was an abstract problem, so no, it has not officially changed hands. It still currently belongs to the city of Animosa.
How many months ago was that? Since you know about this? How many months ago did this get...
It's been a month and a half, two months, since we've had the abstract issue. We just sent it to her attorney for review, um... Attorney with a gentleman's name. He just responded today with a review of the abstract. There was a question on one of the apartments. So, the abstract was in question. We got it delineated and straightened out. We sent it to, is it Matt? Can't think of his name, that's Charlotte's attorney. He reviewed it. He just sent it back to Adrian's office today. Spoke to his office today. They just received his review of that. So technically, it's still the lease to the city.
I just feel odd that, uh, it seemed like every real estate transaction the city takes place, something goes wrong with recording or something, and it's just a mess. Who's dropping the ball?
That property is a mess.
Huh?
That property is a mess. Whenever you split the top over the bottom, it's a huge mess.
No, that's, that's just one, right?
There's three in Animosa just like that.
No, I'm just saying that that's one example of how the city's dropped the ball on, on real estate deals. I mean, if you're having a problem with a certain person doing something, let's get it straightened out. Not just cause the city repairs to do something they really shouldn't be doing, you know? I mean, they've got quite a deal, fitting down to pay anything back to the city till she gets her first rent check. So, I mean...
She's been working on it regardless. She wants to repair it. She's trying to get it done, but technically, it's not legally hers yet, so...
So we, we have guys go up there and fix her up.
Well, not the roof. We, we put some tarping in between, that's what Greg got.
Alright, thank you.
Fourteen point oh, German.
So...
Second.
First by Rich, second by Ron. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?